Matters.
Yeah.
Still the thing matters to us tremendously.
And also, like, one of the main, one of the really important things about this is that if, if that goes through and it limits net metering for residents. And but the big part is that if it keeps us from doing our own solar race, so if we want to use Oliver Street to generate electricity for East Hampton, and it's not gonna let us do that, that would be bad.
This is why I'm folding you in, because you're infinitely more knowledgeable about this than I am.
Because that, eventually, that would be ideal, is if we can have sole East Hampton, you know, energy independent.
Absolutely.
That would be the ideal, right? The kind of Holyoke is, I mean, Holyoke, people in Holyoke don't have to pay very much for the electric bill because they have the Connecticut River.
Okay. Somebody asked Councilor Smith about that, like, what dams we could put back in place and make operational again to generate electricity.
That, that we actually put a provision in with the fish ladder was to, to keep a condo that for, and pull location for micro hydro.
No, I remember that was going on. It's actually a lot of state money right now to take dams down.
Yeah. Yeah.
They're all happy about that.
There's an old, when they fixed the dam back in the seventies, they actually put in a hydro, like, chute on the right side.
Yeah, I remember that.
That was never used.
Yeah.
So.
No, she's, she's got some constituents with interest in that, so that could have been.
Cool.
Um, I'm gonna, I know, the, bringing to order the City Council Public Safety Subcommittee, February eighteenth. Uh, approval of the minutes from before, I did have a chance to read them, I thought they were great.
I saw the meeting, seemed like they mashed up pretty good. I'm happy to move that forward.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, seeing no public speak time, there is no new business right now, so continuing business. I brought the wrong bag, so that's why I'm doing everything from my phone right now. So, we're basically just kind of reviewing the meeting that you and I had before, just to bring Salem up to speed. Um, so this is the acceptance of the Paul Street Extension. Last night, um, as you remember, I went forward and set up a public hearing. We've been working with an attorney called Amanda Kemp, she's the attorney background, I'm gonna let her know when that public hearing is. So, this went on for quite a while, because there was a lot of confusion as to who was responsible for what. And there were, the planning department had made a ton of exemptions on certain things. So, it was hard to figure out why things were done the way they were, and there was also, um, this conservation land that was coming in. So, there's a center island in the cul-de-sac, and we took pictures and we just had a lot of questions, like, is this, um, light pole compliant? Because the city had requested we put in lighting, and then it be, it kind of looks more like, you know, a street lamp rather than a, the, so, the prior city engineer had asked for the manual in case they had to change. But, I sent it back to the planning department, and it was like, you know what, we can't move forward now, there's too many other questions, nobody's mowed this little circle in the center. And, you know, it looked like there was still construction going on, so, you know, why would we accept a street that was still gonna get damaged? And planning got all of those questions answered. So, there's an email from just the, the city planner with all of the questions answered. All, all of the open loops that we had on this. So, as somebody who's kind of been with it from the beginning, I feel like, uh, it's resolved. You know?
Um, the cul-de-sac was my only question that I drove down here last week, check it out. The developer intends to either get a rate agreement with one of the owners or convey it to Lot Six, you know?
I do not know which one of those happened, but that's a lot further than we had gotten prior. So, I was like, okay, you know?
Is it, is it a lot further, but isn't it far enough? I don't want.
I don't know. Um, I'm happy to actually have the, send an email to the city planner and ask her that question to see if that was, you know, who they decided to have do that. Um, you know, a lot of questions about the difference between a lamppost and a streetlight, because it's kind of been an awkward spot. There's still, it's, it's not very pretty, um, I don't know if you had a chance to drive down there.
I did, yeah.
So, it's, it's kind of a construction zone and.
These two lots are completely open. That's where they're just like.
Yeah.
Storing some of their stuff.
Right. Um, so, yeah, it did, it was very awkward, just like, street lamp at the end, and it's not as big as our usual, like, streetlights. But, the city engineer said that it was fine, so.
Like, the, this, there's one s- street light on my street, and it's, it's unlike any other street light in the city.
Yeah.
It's like faux wood, but it's fiberglass.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it is, apparently, that's what they do sometimes.
Yeah, this one looks like one out of Narnia, it's very strange. Um, and then there was the Conservation Commission, it's not Conservation Commission, what is the group here?
Well, it's a, it's a, Hasquahmick.
Yes, Hasquahmick. Um, I was concerned, because this was their entrance, and that seems to have, like, big piles of dirt and a lot of debris.
There's also another entrance at the, the end of, uh, that last street.
But, they're going, they're getting signs, and I think the entrance is, is over here, because he went and he said it, it was fine, it was okay.
So, there's gonna be right away there, too?
Yeah, so I, I did run that by them, because for me, it was like, that looks entirely blocked off, this cul-de-sac hasn't been mowed or maintained in any way whatsoever. And I didn't realize there was a difference between a lamppost and a streetlight, but apparently, seeing this, I now think there is. So, we kind of went back and forth on that. Um, the other question that was brought up, and this was, I'm, I'm gonna ask the attorney this question, is that, um, so it's called, like, Paul Street Extension, is that actually gonna be the name of the street?
I think it's probably, I think it's probably just called Paul Street.
But I just wanna double-check that, so that, you know?
Yeah, because, um, it's just an, it's a, it's an extension of Paul Street.
Precisely.
Uh, okay.
I completely agree. And it's a very small radius, but Joy Winnie, Councilor Winnie, felt that, you know, a bus could turn around.
She felt that, okay. Yeah, and when I drove down there, I mean, it seemed like the street was the same width as the, as normal, as Paul Street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it didn't, you know, there, there was a lot of melt and stuff, there didn't seem to be any drainage issues on the street, which is always one of those things, like.
Yeah, I mean, it didn't look finished from the beginning, and it had a ton of exemptions, exemptions, like, it didn't have to do the curbs that, that we typically require. And that there was, like, th- this film or this paper around all of the drainage, and, and the city engineer had said, oh, that's okay, and then, you know, it, it was just weird, for a very small street, it had a lot of stuff going on, and there's still empty lots, and there's still construction that's gonna happen, so.
Right.
You know, all of those, because they're, they're tar curving, rather than the other curving, like, you know, the snow piles are getting on, and, like, did we want to accept a street that?
Right.
Was pretty dinged up, so, like I said, we kept going back and forth on this.
And so, so the, um, I couldn't see because there was snow.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on the sides of the street, is it, it's kind of the?
The berms.
The small berms.
The little tar berms, yeah.
And, and that's not atypical.
Nope.
So, like, South Street has a, a section where it's just the berms.
But there's so much construction going on, there's those machines, like, are driving over them, so, you know, they're not as durable as what we usually require.
What's going on with Parcel C, is that another entrance into, not that that's part, I'm just curious?
Sorry, where, can you?
It's like the odd look angle, is that, is that another entrance to the?
That is part of Pasquahmick as well, I believe, and it might be because this, these people wanted to put, um, decks on the back of their house, which was going right in the spot, so there's a weird variance, and this, this might be drainage. I think it's like some tall plants, like, um, stormwater, and, and. This is now closed, this was an extra entrance into, this is, um.
Yeah, that's, that was a development.
A restricted condominium complex, and that was another entrance for ambulances, so. Yeah, for, I mean, for a small little thing, a lot of stuff going on, so.
And it seems like a lot of it is, uh, kind of resolved though now?
Yeah, precisely. So, I mean, it was like, you know, we, we tried to get answers for months, you know, about, like, does anybody know about this, know about that? But, once I, um, you know, I was like, you know what, I'm just gonna send this back to planning.
Yeah.
And then everything got resolved really quickly.
That's good.
So, that worked. Yeah, that's part of the stormwater.
And but there wasn't one, like, big thing holding it up, it was kind of just.
No, we just wanted to make sure.
And who's gonna take care of the cul-de-sac and things?
Precisely, because now, it's like, okay, we're taking responsibility for this, and, and it looks a little bit.
It's not a lot of street.
It's a little shabby.
Not a lot of street to add to, or?
No, it doesn't really, yeah.
It's better than that at all.
Right, no, that's a huge project that needs to be undertaken.
Okay, so, we're gonna be making a recommendation for the public hearing?
Yeah, thank you for going and took a, taking a look, I wasn't sure, so, yeah, I just, I kinda wanted to catch you guys up, and, you know, I was ambitious, but I wanted to get the public hearing stuff.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't seem like there's that much holding it up. I think, well, we were just gonna, you were gonna get, get a answer from the lawyer on, one last question?
Well, so, on the public hearing, I'm gonna let her know that we're gonna have the public hearing, so she can show up.
Yeah.
And also, I just wanna confirm the wording of the street.
Oh, yeah, I know, it's Paul Street Extension, or whether it's Paul Street.
Precisely.
Okay. Um, well, I'd be happy to, to move it to the full council.
All those on paper?
Aye.
Great.
Cool.
So, and this is where I dropped the ball, I, um, I brought the wrong bag, so I do not have.
Acceptance protocol?
Exactly. So, I'm gonna share the Google document with you, and I can do that right now. So, what we did last time, and you saw the meeting, was just, um, kind of caught you up to speed to take a look at it, we had used, other examples of street protocols and whatnot, so, I do have it as, um, an active electronic document as well, but I printed out a hard copy. So, one of the things that has taken a long time on this is we, the prior committee and I, we sat and we worked on it, we looked at all the other documents that we had, and we pulled things that we liked. So, everybody had a copy, highlighters, post-its, we pulled what we liked. So, and that was, um, Councilor Hagan, and Councilor Winnie and I. So, then, we just threw everything at the wall that we had, that we liked, and we thought was applicable. And then, we worked with that document to figure out which aspects of the document would need clarification, and which departments would give that clarification. Our first meeting, first couple of meetings with this, was with this city engineer, because we really felt like he was the most.
Important piece of the puzzle.
Right, because it had, because he was the one who was gonna be kind of enforcing. Right. I'm gonna check in the email, because I've been waiting for this already.
Okay, did you, did you share that, uh?
Yes. The street acceptance protocol?
Yeah.
Um, I can either talk or do that, so.
Wait, can you both?
I, you, there's like five documents, I know, I know, I can do the whole thing, just sharing the whole damn file.
And so, where are you, when you're gonna ask this?
Yeah, it's a copy of that.
The same one?
Mm-hmm, it'll be the same thing.
And so, this, you said that this was something that was, uh, roughly based on other communities' street acceptance?
Yep, I have, um, everything on Google Drive, I have a shared folder, so I even have copies of the ones that we referenced, you know? And, um, the things that we liked and the parts that we liked. So, we went through with the city engineer first. And then, because I wanted to do, like, kind of a tiered rollout, so that, you know, the document got stronger as it went through the different departments. Um, so, and some of the things that we decided on, the, the goal, uh, for this is to make, get more miles for our Chapter Ninety money, so that we can add streets to our street rules, so that we get more funding for parks.
Yeah.
That's the bottom line. Also, to make it so that this is not necessarily an income generating item or a revenue center, but to make it so that we don't lose money. Because when people have to go out, look at it, we absolutely plow and sand and clean up afterwards for public safety, that is just all money out. So, we wanted to find a way to kind of make it so that it's closer to a zero-sum game. So, we did add, um, we've seen places that have an application fee, when you go with the street acceptance, to take care of administrative costs, because there are quite a few, quite a few people have to go out and look at it. We also, um, looked into charging per mile for those services, as far as, like, plowing and sanding, and whether or not it be by the hour or the mile. So, the document went to the Department of Public Works, and we got that information. We also wanted to make sure that, um, the fire department and the police department got to take a look at it, just to make sure that, like, yeah, the placement of that fire hydrant is okay, or there should be.
Right, wide enough for a fire truck.
Exactly, yeah. And, and these kind of came about because we had gone to a couple of, um, street acceptances, you know, where there wasn't even, like, there was one, there was a street ended into, like, a dingle, like, it was like, that should probably have a fence, you know? So, by the, by the time it gets to city council, it should pretty much be done.
Yeah.
So, all of the questions that we had, especially with, like, the Paul Street extension, the conversation, we just had all of those questions, well, ooh. What we wanted to do is have this document, get answers to all those questions before it hits public safety.
Well, and if this is up there.
Because these projects take years.
Yeah.
And going back, I mean, I don't think there was, like, you know, anybody trying to give information about Paul Street, it just happened so long ago.
Right.
That the, nobody knows what's going on. So, we thought this document and a checklist for whoever's making the application, like, these are the things you have to add. Have, um, Conservation Commission sign off on it, take a look, make sure that nothing's impacting things, the things that we added.
Planning crawl.
Yeah, um, but it has gone to planning a couple of times. Um, these also have to go to our attorney, and we pay, we don't have our attorney, like, on a stipend, so we pay him per hour, so, that costs us money. So, you know, we added in these fees to cover the administrative costs, and, and not a revenue center. Like, it's, it's very just, it's, it's not something that's gonna.
Right.
But, yeah, so, those are the types of things that we were looking at and bumping into for this document. So.
Seems to make sense?
Yeah.
And, and that way, we can tighten up all the ones that haven't been accepted, and any new streets that get made, that they'll have a, a nice roadmap.
Mm-hmm, yeah, absolutely.
Fun.
Councilor Winnie was adamant about having a flow chart, I can do that, I have no problem with that.
Oh, for the applicants?
Right. So, that basically, by the time it comes to public safety, you get a document that has a checkbox, everything is checked off, and there's a, you know, a couple of certificates of compliance, probably from, you know, maybe we could just wrap it into public safety and be like, fire and police, and one from conservation, and, so, you know. So, that's who has seen it, uh, the planning department has seen it twice, we did a joint meeting with the planning department, which was really, really great.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I had made copies for the members of the planning department to, like, make their notes actually on the document, so that we could collect them afterwards. That did not happen. It got made into an electronic document. The only person who's had input is the city planner. But, they wanna wait until it's finished. So, that's kind of where my limbo has been.
And so, it's, it seems like it's getting towards the end of.
It's super close.
Gestation.
Yeah, I'm feeling pretty good about it, so.
The planning department wants to wait till it's finished?
Yeah.
Before they do the final review?
The planning department has, like, tons of.
I'm sure Jess.
Yeah. No, and there's a couple of different things, like, she doesn't want a miler copy, she wants it to look like this, you know, there's those kind of questions, where different departments are looking for different things, but when it gets registered. Um, the other big question, and I'm thinking about folding and Council rests on this, because where this document is gonna live, is it gonna be city council rules, is this gonna be ordinance, is this gonna be? So, I can't recall where our current street protocol lives right now, off the top of my head.
It might be, but, it could, it's, it's very possible it's within the zoning ordinance.
Mm-hmm, it probably is.
So, that's, that might be the best fit for it, is within, because when you're, you know, anything that has to do with zoning, which this basically is.
It is, yeah.
Zoning related, because you're talking about accepting streets, which is, then creates a, a new layer within the zoning. I think, I think we're probably.
It is, I, I agree with you, but it's the city council who, um, makes the acceptance, so is it, and we're saying, okay, we'd like all this information beforehand.
Right.
So, it's something, um, I, I don't figure it out.
Well, we can, Dan, Dan would have a good idea. My, my initial thought is that we go under.
So, if anybody would like to tackle that one, I've looked at it a couple of different ways, I mean, so, just where, you know, we think it makes the most sense.
Right, because generally, yeah, I'm, I'm, whatever, Dan, Dan will have a good clue on that. But I would say, like, generally, like, rules are things that govern us within our own body.
Mm-hmm.
And, like, so, a street acceptance protocol would be, since it's something that we would need to follow, but it doesn't necessarily govern our interactions on, it just governs our.
Precisely, and then with.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then, and with zoning, we're folding in other departments, like DPW would put something there, so does it fall in, you know, like,
Yeah.
What tier should it be in? If anybody wants to tackle that, I haven't been able to, I have no recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, I think, you know, that's the kind of thing that we can talk to a couple of people, I, my initial thought is that it'll, it'll fall.
Yeah.
And so, then it'll, if, and if that's the case, it'll come to my committee anyway.
Mm-hmm.
And, so, if I'm working with you guys on it here, that'll be easier.
Great, good.
Makes it.
Yeah, no, that, that's one of the things that.
Crossover.
Awesome, great. So, that's where that is at.
That's good, if I could, if, if you could share that with us, that'd be awesome, because, uh, I think, once I read it, and, and had a chance to dig into it a little bit more, then I'd have a better idea of whether it was actually.
Absolutely, and I'm, I'm psyched that you guys are, like, Google Doc people, so you can throw, like, notes in there and stuff. That's gonna be really awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, this is not the most exciting stuff in the world, but.
No, but it's important.
It's, I just wanna get it right.
Especially, you know, like, we had a.
And we lose money.
Treehouses Road Button Way.
Mm-hmm.
Which, I don't, I'm, I think it's accepted, I'm pretty sure, I don't, I don't have the list of streets that aren't accepted, but they.
Brought the wrong bag with the list of streets.
They, they, it's, it's too narrow, like.
Yeah.
Two fire trucks can't drive by each other on that street, and it's like twisty-turny.
Yeah.
So, like, that one wasn't done properly.
Yeah.
You know, um, so, I think it'll be good to have this, so, the streets do get done, like, do, and like, within the street acceptance protocol, do we have, like, minimum widths, curvages, like.
That's probably under zoning. So, what we have is that.
Yeah.
Those things should be checked before they get to us, so, like, you know, like, basically, by the time it gets to street acceptance, it should be done. So, we had gone out to our street acceptances, we were like, this doesn't even look remotely finished, and then there was the one that ended into a big ditch. We were like, that probably needs a fence, did anybody look at this? So, they, and it's a lot of different departments. So, what this does is it kind of gives whomever's applying for it, because the attorneys have no fun, like, coming back and forth from this department. It will help give them, like you said, a roadmap of what department they need to talk to. It's, nobody doesn't go like, well, does Conservation see this? You can kind of say, yep.
Yep.
Here's my certificate of compliance with this department, this department, this department, this department, it's done.
Good.
And they have a checklist, so that they know who they have to go and talk to, and it has all their contact information as well, you know? Like, this is how you reach this person, this is how you reach that. I just wanted to.
It's perfect.
Thanks. Um, yeah, it's good, it's just, um, yeah, because.
Make sure it stays updated.
Did you see?
Change.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. But, you know, we have living, breathing documents now, you know?
Or zoning, one of those things that needs to breathe. It's, I mean, it, I think, you know, I just heard plans to do a wholesale, complete rewrite of this one.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's, it was done too long ago.
We had to redo a map because somebody had used a magic marker, and you couldn't tell because the line was too thick. That's crazy, yeah.
Yeah, that was the, all of the zoning maps.
Kicking, dragging, people kicking and screaming into the twenty-first century with this stuff. So, yeah, I mean, we can get it done.
Yeah.
This is what, you know, real grown-up cities do, so.
Cool.
Um, where's my agenda?
Pleasant Street?
Oh, so, I talked to Barbara about that, and she said, one of the things, so, do you need the background on this?
I mean, I know that there's.
There's, there's a couple of mill owners.
Yep.
You know, probably yourself included, who, we were, uh, talked to me about the fact that there's some kind of organic and probably illegal, like, on-street parking happening.
Yeah, yeah.
And they put in some rules, because there were big trucks, and now, it's not big trucks. So, these mills, um, as, as the district counselor, they're gonna be doing all the parking, like, kind of in the back.
Yeah.
But, I wanna make sure that it doesn't become kind of this, like, Hadrian's Wall kind of thing, so that there's some really nice entrances on the Pleasant Street side as well. Because there's a whole neighborhood that lives across the street.
Yeah, makes sense.
And kind of marrying those neighborhoods, and I think, um.
And it's also convenient for a lot of people to park on Pleasant Street.
Yeah, and on-street parking will, like, be kind of a traffic calming measure.
Yeah.
And people fly down Pleasant Street.
Well, and also, I mean, if you think about the entrance to the backs of the mills, it's, like, it's that tight turn at the Legion that's kind of going down a hill, there's, like, from other mills.
Right, and you're gonna be able to drive all the way around, and then come up, um, as a national known movement, on the other side of.
Yeah, on the other, on the eastwards, on the, on the.
And then that's the street, and I looked at the parking on that street, because, um, somebody had a complaint, because they were like, it's a snow emergency, can we park on the street or not park in the street? And, you know, everybody on that street now comes over here, and I'm like, actually, I looked it up, and there's supposedly no parking on that street at all. So, it's a matter of kind of encircling this, the, the mill project with, you know, some pedestrian-friendly.
There's still that area that does get big trucks, closer to the eastwards side.
Uh. Correct.
So, it's like a park. Fifteen minute parking across the street from Jerry's.
Yep.
And then, not parking that, there's no parking right next to the handicap spots.
Right, but people are parking on that street. I mean, people are parking, yeah.
Because, well, it's not posted, like, so in front of Mill One Eighty, there's no, nothing's posted. But right next to there, there is one parking this side. Yeah, right next, uh, it's like right on the other side of the Legions, um, all those handicap spaces. There's one on your side, there's one on, like, the Jerry's side of the handicap spots. Yeah. And there's one on the various streets. Yeah, um, but it all, like, unless it's posted, there's parking, which is a way, like, the rule of common just happened.
So, the, the advice I got from Barbara was basically, let's see what we have on the book. So, what I was thinking about doing is getting, like, an aerial picture of the mill project, and then we can just mark out what our current laws are.
What's already posted, that's what she means by what's on the book.
What's already in our rules and regulations, because it has all the parking.
That would be in, uh, forensics.
Yep, and, um, when this first came up, the mill owners had come to the meeting, and, um, Officer Alberti was here, and, you know, we talked about it. So, you know, this is something that you wanna work together with, obviously, the police department and the DPW, and see exactly what's going on, so.
Yeah. And that street is weird with, you know, you talk about adding spots to the context, and people are still flying, and it's just making it dangerous.
Right.
Right, you wanna have the appropriate setbacks for, like, um.
How far you are from a curb. Barbara also very healthily said, like, don't use, she's like, use landmarks that don't move. Because people have used landmarks, like, you know, the tree on the end of the thing, so. Um, yeah, it's kind of a big project, but I figured it was a good kind of winter project, so then in the spring, it can marry really well with everything that's gonna be done in the back of the building.
Right.
And we're just talking about painted lines for parking spaces, not like meter, not anything, but just so that it's like, here's a spot. Because it's kind of, it's just all kind of really-nilly over there right now.
Um, let me see, I got a, an email that I'm gonna send to you guys. Did you, did you guys get the email about, um, the landlord, um, who's concerned about the parking ban? Wanted to do odd and even, uh, parking?
No, I didn't, but I did see somebody who was super upset about their car getting towed two days after the snow or something like that. Because our, our parking ban is just like.
Apparently, we're.
Complete in total, and for months.
Well, and also, apparently, apparently, we are, uh, enforcing this year, and, and in years past, we have not been enforcing. Yeah, this is it, this guy. So, let me forward this to you guys.
Sure.
Uh, because I think it would make sense for our, this committee to look at it, so, now we can get our agenda.
Right.
Nine-ten, email?
Um, actually, if you could use the hayes@easthampton.org, that'd be great.
Hayes@easthampton.
Yeah.
Okay, and, let's see, what's your, do I have any mail on here?
Your D-Carry.
D-Carry, I think, so. D. C. D-Carry at easthampton? Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'll, I just forwarded it to you guys.
Great.
So.
Well, so, I was thinking the next step was to get a map, maybe mark out what the existing conditions are.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, take it from there.
And what, and then look at what they should be.
Right.
Yeah, that seems, I mean.
Is that something, do you want me to show up with that done, or do you want?
No, we can do it here.
We'll do it in a meeting, okay. And, um, we might have to do, like, maybe, maybe add, like, because typically, we usually only meet, like, once a month or twice a month, but maybe to get this done by spring and to get it rolling, we might have to do.
Yeah, we can see what rolls out, I mean.
Quicker meetings, yeah.
I don't think it, it's probably not gonna be that difficult, once we take a look at it and say, you know.
Right.
Uh, we can fit two cars here, and then we have a, you know, a ten-foot, uh, buffer between the end of parking and the entrance.
I wanna make sure the handicap accessibility makes sense, that if there needs to be a crosswalk, we put that in, you know? Like, I know Eastworth has a parking lot across the street, and, um, yeah, and the mill owners are definitely interested in seeing, like, what goes on with this, and, you know, just to make it safer, like, that kind of, that area, it's a big, big chunk. area, it's a big, big chunk of, chunk of road, that is gonna be very, very different in a few months, so, you just kind of wanna get in front of it.
Sure, especially with the neighborhoods across the street, and businesses booming, you know, adding crosswires, and doing, just looking at the whole safety of the whole street, not just the place.